We're going to call this meeting to order. It's now 5:30. At this time, I want to ask Rodney Buckingham, if you do prayer for us this evening?
Father, we thank you for granting us this day. We thank you for giving your servants the privilege of conducting the people's business this evening. Father, we humbly ask you for the patience of Job, the wisdom of Solomon, and the peace that passes all understanding as we move through this process. We thank you for your blessings on us all. Amen.
Amen.
And while we're standing, please, I'm going to ask the directors over here to stay with directors in the pledge of allegiance.
Come on up front.
Come up front.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being just as strong.
Thank y'all. And at this time, before we get cranked up and going, I'd like to welcome Ms. Sophia Scott. And you have got a presentation? What did you get, a young lady?
Have you ever found four-leaf clover? I want to invite you to walk down where you lay with me a moment and we gather back. Maybe you saw it out of the blue. You didn't even have to look for it. And instantly you thought, oh wow, today's going to be a great day. Maybe you had to hunt for it, finding thousands upon thousands of stinky three-leaf clovers until you found the jewel in the crown, the four-leaf clover. Do you remember that feeling? To me, it's kind of like when you're expecting Faith's mystery meatloaf in lunchroom. Ugh, only to find that the menu has changed to fried chicken waffles. Mmm, you get it now, don't you? It's funny how we think that four-leaf leaves on a green stick are somehow going to change your luck and possibly your lives. More friends, more happiness, more success. Well, I'm here to tell you about how I found a four-leaf clover that has been doing just that. It has been giving me all those things, and it can do the same for you. Hello, my name is Sophia Scott, and nine months ago, I discovered four-leaf. It is changing the way that I look at everything, and it is my hope that today, my words will help you understand what it can do for you too. Now, it's time to be a little honest with you. Sometimes when I go to school, I get so frustrated because I feel like the work is just a little challenging now. And on top of that, there have to be those few people who tell me I'm either not good enough or not smart enough to do the more challenging things. Yet, when I discovered four-leaf, I was able to discover what I was interested in. And the beauty of it all is that the people in four-leaf recognize the potential that I have to do these great things. I know there are a lot of kids out there that are just like me. They're searching. They're looking for a place where people take their time to listen to what they have to offer. They're just trying to discover where they can fit in. Maybe you're one of those kids. Four-leaf leaders and volunteers will work hard to help them understand what they have to offer. I will conclude with this story. There once was a man who owned a mansion looking out over the beautiful Rocky Mountains. Everyone who came to his house would look out and say, oh wow, what a wonderful view. However, one man from Texas came, and he said, "I hate it. You can't see anything because the trees and the mountains are blocking the view." Isn't that how it is with us sometimes? Not realizing what is right in front of us, what's in us. But four-leaf gives you a numerous worldview, helping you discover all of who you are and all of who you can be. These past nine months, I competed at DPA, done many community services, and got to four-leaf summer camp with my friends. So what's stopping you? Look through a new lens and join four-leaf.
And while we want to finish this, we have a four-leaf proclamation that we had met. And this time, while I get the other two commissioners here, I'd like for them to go ahead and sign off.
Thank you. Okay, I've got it. Thank you.
These boys didn't. They just, these guys didn't come. That's another reason I asked, you know, they had had a conflict with me, but we kind of got the chance. I brought along two record books for y'all to have a chance to look at. This probably shows what they... This is a junior. Of course, I ain't got grandparents, grandsons, but I'd say you just go and think about it.
Thank you very much.
We thank y'all for your support.
No problem.
Thank you for taking the time.
You're more than welcome. We have another presentation we're going to do real quick. And I'm going to read this little note here. Since January 1st of 2019, Bee Paul's We Care has handled 88 private dog adoptions via networking. 124 dogs were placed in rescues and transported by our volunteer group, and 20 cats rescued and transported. As of October 7th, Bee Paul's has had a hand in finding homes for 232 Pickens County animals. As of this week, Bee Paul's has 19 dogs in foster care with rescue commitment. Many of these are out of state in northern places like Connecticut, Maine, and Massachusetts. Hope I can say that one right. I have never seen a harder working nor such an effective group. Thank y'all very much. From Kelly Ingram's master networking abilities to Julie Ramming and Suzie Champitos? Did I hit that one right? Transporting and fostering skills to the people who foster home these animals and transport them to their rides up north. This is a truly amazing group of women and men. Chrissy Poole reminded me of the story of Abraham Lincoln, who was making a trip with several companions. They came upon a small bird that had been blown out of its nest by a windstorm. His companions laughed at him for delaying them as Lincoln searched for the area for the young bird's home. He said, "I could not have slept tonight if I had left these helpless little creatures to perish on the ground." Kelly Ingram and the entire group of Bee Paul's We Care can sleep well knowing that they too have helped countless animals not only not to perish, but truly thrive in the time God has given them on earth. Thank y'all very much for what you do for Pickens County Animal Shelter. And at that time, which way I've got another plaque here, if my voice will hold out. Pickens County Board of Commissioners is honored to recognize Bee Paul's We Care for their outstanding dedication, compassion, and generous volunteer efforts of their time and money donated to much-needed rescues, fosters, and fundraising. May I get a picture for y'all up here?
Thank you.
Alright, my turn. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, I want everybody laughing and smiling in my picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lisa, on item number four, we have an amendment to the agenda. Add under item F, rezones for RZ 8191283 for Charleston Cathy Twoncky. Pardon? All right, I need a move in a second to approve the agenda with that correction. I'm moving a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we go to employee recognition. Ms. Becky, do we have any employee recognition report tonight?
No.
Don't have any? All right. All right, that brings us down to item number seven. Unconsent agenda, which we signed the four-leaf proclamation that we signed earlier this evening on A, and then B, we signed the domestic violence proclamation. Those been taken care of, and we have completed all that. All right, that brings us down to old business. Do we have any old business? No old business? Do we have any new business? No, no new business. That brings us down to the financial report. Now, this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Faith Harbin.
Okay. The financial report that, for the period ending September 30th, is 75% of our fiscal year complete. We'll start looking at the revenue. The general fund revenue collections through September 30th are $11,912,191. That's 42.32% of the revenue budget. On the expenditures for general government, the expenditures were $2,587,078, and that's 72.27%. For judicial expenditures were $2,402,675, and that's 66.2%. For public safety, the expenditures are $10,193,221, and that's 72.34%. And then we go to the public works functions, and their expenditures are $3,585,330, and that's 73.84%. For the health department, senior center and the MATS program, $147,406, and that's 47.12%. For culture and recreation, $725,026, and that's 71.7%. For housing and development, $486,813, and that is 73.27%. So the total general fund expenditures through the end of September are $20,127,548, and that's 71.5%. So the expenditures are running about 3.5% under the budgeted amount overall. For the enterprise funds, the water department, expenditures are $1,571,511, and that's 65.08%. For the airport, expenditures are $523,926, and that is well over their original expenditure budget. But their revenue, the revenues were budgeted at $454,000 also, and through the end of September, their revenue is over $565,000. So possibly next month, I'll talk to Randy at the airport and see what his projections are through the end of the year, and we're going to need to do an adjustment to increase the expenditure budget and revenue budget for that fund.
I think we're experiencing such a... Quite a bit of sales and fuel aviation.
Yes.
They are selling a ton of that aviation.
During the summer were really high. So, any questions?
Any update on the budgets that we're going to be looking at here in the next few weeks?
The budgets are almost all complete and the budget requests. And you have your meeting scheduled. Those meetings are next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Right now, we're going to bring you red pens.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Faith. All right, that brings us down to item number, item number 11 under action items. I need an approval for the board minutes for September 9th, 2019. Y'all have got a copy of those. Those minutes, I have looked over them. Did not see any misspellings or anything out of line. I need a move in a second to approve. Move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, item number two. We had a work session on October 3rd, 2019. I've also looked over those minutes. Did not see any, any mistakes or any additions, deletions. If y'all are happy, I need to go ahead and get a move in a second to approve those minutes, please. Have a move in a second for those minutes. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. And then last but not least, we had a call meeting on October 3rd, 2019. The minutes on that one, I have looked over those. Did not see any corrections that needed to be made. Need a move in a second to approve these minutes, please. Move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, item B, resolution authorizing early retirement incentive program. Mr. Lynn, do you have anything to say about that? I've got it right here. Something we have worked on for a year or two, trying to get to this point. It's a resolution of Pickens County Board of Commissioners to authorize early retirement incentive program for a few individuals that are going to qualify for this. Ms. Demme, have you and Jerry had time to review this? Ms. Lynn, you got any things? Yeah. You got on this E, wasn't it? Yeah. The ERIT, election window period shall begin November 1st, 2019, and end on December 16th of 2019. You want to express on the details of that timeframe? Does everybody understand what that means? Okay. Come November 1st, when this thing hits the floor, y'all have got approximately, I think it's 45 days to look at the retirement package of this proposal. There's, I think, about eight or nine of y'all that are going to qualify for that, Jerry. And you've got 45 days to look at it. At that time, if you approve it, you can sign it. And I think at the time of the signature, you have another nine days.
Seven.
Seven days? Seven days, I'm sorry. Seven days to back out. And that's pretty well, I'm assuming that's what that pretty well means right there. Any questions?
Does it come a fateful immediately after the seventh day after signature? Or do you have to wait till January 1st?
It's going to be what they call a rolling retirement. So the paperwork will be available to everybody on November 1st. If you choose to sign it that day, then your retirement period will be over like by the 8th, so on the 9th.
Okay, they could retire.
You can, well, you can terminate during that month. Your first retirement, your retirement date, when you actually got your first retirement check would be December 1st. So it'd be the first day of the month following your termination.
And is there a list of the names?
That was in the previous resolution.
Yeah, it was.
I don't have that listed anymore.
That's not in this here.
The eighth that y'all were...
Will the administrator plan be here to meet with them when they give them the package?
Yes.
And answer any questions?
They'll have, they'll have all the information that they need. They'll have an estimation of what their total income every month, their retirement income's going to be. They'll have all the information that they need to make that decision if they want to do that.
And then they would probably have numbers to call and ask him about additional questions?
Yeah.
Any further questions at this time on that? Before we go forward, I need a move in a second for approval of this resolution, please. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion from anyone?
I'd love to see the list, because I mean, I was told there was somebody like a month after this passed that they'd be eligible, that it was going to be included. But I ain't seen the actual list, other than when we talked. But I heard one or two more that had.
Can you go get?
It's in the other paperwork. I bet it is. It was in the previous resolution that they passed.
So what you're saying is there's one or two more that just missed it by a day?
Yeah, Alan, yeah, like soon as it passed, it'd be like 15 days, there'd be another one eligible. And I was told that by one of the board members, that they were not, the commissioner, one of the board members that's on this, that they would be, they knew that it was going to be included, but I hadn't seen it. Yeah, and I'd hate for it to go, and then, you know, a week later.
I think there was one when everything was said, I think by the date this thing was going to be released, that was going to be in there. I think it was, is that Cooley boy?
Yeah, that's, that's the one I thought. They said it was going to be included. I wanted to make sure.
But would he, but would he qualify? I mean, you're just 15 days. You have 45 days. Would he qualify in that timeframe?
That's exactly what he was told, was that he would qualify in that timeframe. That when the paper would be released.
I don't remember hearing that.
That he would qualify within that timeframe, is what he was told, Phil.
Y'all can contact the plan administrator and make sure that it's based upon the resolution being adopted by.
Okay, here's, here's the list we got here. Rodney Buckingham, Scotty Crowe, Roy Dobbs, Wesley Ensley, Betty Jones, R.S. Payne, William Quentin, and Jerry Walker. That's all the things. And I believe the young man's going to miss it by 15 days. And that's what you're saying, he needs to contact?
He needs to contact the plan administrator. It'll be their interpretation. They patrol as well.
Well, I know y'all got a hard, I mean, y'all got a date as of December, whatever, you know, V. But I think it's a shame that somebody 15 days away after it passes does not.
If you're talking about, because I think you're talking about, it would have had to been mid-February before his time would have been in. And we could not keep it open that long. And there were some others that if we could stretch it out another 30 days, they might have.
They're going to fall in the same group again.
That's what, when we were talking with Cale Hodges, that's what he warned us of. You know, you can't, you can't just keep on going and going to try to include everybody.
Right, right.
Because it just doesn't work.
Is that Mr. Cooley?
Yes. It was mid-February.
Okay. All right, any further, any other questions we go forward with this? All right. We need a move in a second to approve this resolution. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right. That brings us down to item C. That was, let's see. Installment agreement and financing documents for agency gene leads for public works facility. That was what we had the early, early call meeting on. That was the one we had the special call meeting on at 5:00. I need a move in a second to give me the authority to sign these documents as they get leased up.
That's the sound of resolution today together with the closing documents coming up.
Need a move in a second, Glenn, approval, please. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, that brings us down to item number D, the resolution for the city park grant. I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay. For those of you that are curious about the city park grant, we got a rendering in the hallway over there. I think y'all looked at it last, last time we had a meeting. And I'm going to let, I'm going to turn it over to Phil at this time.
We put that in there as kind of a placeholder, because as you know, the deadline for the grant application is the end of this month. And instead of being a resolution, it's a letter that needs to be issued by the governing authority. So if y'all could see fit to vote to have the chairman sign that letter once we get it ready for this execution. Basically saying it's for the prison. It will address the matching fund obligation of the county as well, that the city has one as well. And I'll show it to y'all, but it's basically authorizing the wrong sign.
All right. Have a move in a second. Any further discussion? None being all that favorable, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. All right, and that brings us down to item E. We have a resolution here for employment of department heads and appointed employees. And I'm going to read this out real quick. It is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County as follows. All department heads, the county clerk, the deputy, or assistant county clerk shall be hired, fired, or transferred only through a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. I need to know y'all's feeling on that one. And if that's approved with y'all, a move in a second to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Sure. Have a move in a second. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Okay, have a move in a second. At this time, any further discussion?
And then I'd like to make the point, and back in January 2013, you had a resolution. Claire, and what we're dealing with is the, is the, is the local act that created the Board of Commissioners. And you were saying that the employee, the hiring and firing of employees should rest with the chairman pursuant to section 110. Traditionally, your custom has been for the three of y'all to consult on the department heads, the hiring and firing of the department heads. I don't think we've had a transfer before. And so what we're doing with the resolution is clarifying what your custom is and it's not in conflict with the, with the act. The act basically is talking about it. So just a clarification of what you're, what you're actually doing in the January 2013 presentation.
All right, any further discussion with that? All right. I need a move in a second to approve. Oh, we already done that. I mean, all, yeah, all in favor, nobody saying aye? None opposed? Thank you. That has been approved. All right. That brings us down to item number F, under the rezon request for RZ 8191283. Request for change in land use classification, 36.61. After reviewing the application, receiving the staff report to be approved, and listening to the testimony from both the applicant and no public input, the Pickens County Planning Commission voted for yes and zero no to approve the rezon request on the 36.61 acres contained on tax that parcel 002-001-007. That is going from rural residential to agriculture. So they're going back from rural, going from rural residence back to agriculture. Located on Inland Drive in Hocking Rock, Georgia. The intended purpose of this rezon request to approve is to have a farm winery and plant approximately one and a half acres in grapes. 2020, 2021 totaling three acres in grapes, and Mr. and Mrs. Otech. Pickens County Planning Commission now forwards this request to the Board of Commissioners for review and decision. What is y'all's preference on this one?
I'm just curious. I'm not familiar with Inland Drive. What is?
It's a dirt road right on the, I mean, I'm sorry, the Gilmore.
It's been that way, we just clarified, it's always been that way. But we just clarified it with the resolution, that's what Mr. Landen was saying.
So before you, it was the same?
It was the same. The guy with ACCG that came over and met with us when we were first a three-person board, he actually sat down with all of us and wrote that up at that time.
It just never ran into our position?
Right.
I just didn't understand what I was trying to...
Yeah, we just want to be sure, get everything clear as we go forward through the rest. Any other comments? Ladies and gentlemen, be careful with the Apple Festival up in OJ. Y'all have a safe weekend, and hope to see y'all tomorrow and next week. Thank you very much.